...for us, so people at home can watch. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. We're gonna just start with a minute or two from Mayor Jackie Marsh. Come on up.
So there was a Disabilities Advisory Board meeting at 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna run out. If the actual liaison is there, I'll come back. If not, I'll stay for that meeting. But I asked to have a few minutes, because I want to make it very clear. So there's no doubt in anybody's mind who are the people I support. Troy Crenney, Ward 1. Kat McManus, Ward 2. Erin Black, Ward 3. Laura Lightcoba, Ward 4. These are the candidates that I support. I've been on council for six years, and I've always been in the minority. And I hear from people, and I hear the needs and the concerns. Come on, Kat. You know, we vote by majority vote. If you want to actually have change where we put people first, you've gotta get us the majority. You can't elect me and then vote for one of them.
Right.
How much more clear can that be? These candidates, all but Troy are people that I asked to run. Getting to know them, I knew that their hearts would always be with the people first. And that's what we need, because we make decisions you don't know what's gonna come before us. But if your priority is people, the well-being of people, the safety, the quality of life, you're not gonna say a farm is blighted and give away property tax for 25 years, right? You aren't gonna do that. So I don't know what will come before us in the next two years and four years for council members. But I want people that care about the people of Loveland, that care about our quality of life, our safety, the things that we value. So please, whatever you can do to support these four candidates, do with them. We're gonna make positive change in Loveland. I'm gonna remind people to get our yard signs in the back of the room. Please take them. You know, waving signs on weekends. Let's start doing that this weekend, and some already have. But truly, there are things that we can do. A land bank, so that we can do affordable housing. Climate change plans. There are things that we can do. In the six years that I've been on council, 13 times I've had council agree we want staff to look into something. Not one of my 13 things has ever come before council for a vote. That's because work is going on in the behind-the-scenes to make sure nothing the mayor suggests ever gets voted on. I need their help. So please, support these candidates, please.
Thank you, Jackie. Very clear, very clear who you support. That's right. So we're gonna take just a minute or two and have the editor of the Loveland Voice come up and kind of kick things off. Jessica Schneider.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I'm the founder and editor of the Loveland Voice. Thank you to George, our co-editor, or associate editor. Thank you to Danielle Hastings for making all these yummy treats that all spell "vote." And there's a ton of free buttons up there for you. And there are signs, like Mayor Marsh said. I want to thank all of these wonderful candidates who reached out to the Loveland Voice and asked for an opportunity to connect with you as voters. Also, it's been kind of a rough week. It's been kind of rough. So I wanted to share this poem, just to kind of set the tone of things before Amanda takes over again. The poem is called "Kindness," by Naomi Shihav Nai. Before you know what kindness really is, you must lose things. Feel the future dissolve in a moment, like salt in a weakened broth. What you held in your hand, what you counted and so carefully saved, all this must go so you know how desolate the landscape can be between the regions of kindness. How you ride and ride... Schneider. How you ride and ride, thinking the bus will never stop. The passengers eating maize and chicken will stare out the window forever. Before you learn the tender gravity of kindness, you must travel where the Indian in a white poncho lies dead by the side of the road. You must see how this could be you, how he too was someone who journeyed through the night with plants in the simple breath that kept him alive. Before you know kindness as the deepest thing inside, you must know sorrow as the other deepest thing. You must wake up with sorrow. You must speak to it till your voice catches the thread of all sorrows and you see the size of the cloth. Then it is only kindness that makes sense anymore, only kindness that ties your shoes and sends you out into the day to gaze at bread, only kindness that raises its head from the crowd of the world to say, "It is you I've been looking for," and then goes with you everywhere like a shadow or a friend. And I wish that for everyone here. And I... We only do kindness with the Loveland Voice, so... Thank you, Amanda. And thank you again.
Okay, let's get started. You guys want to come up? Have a seat. So the way that we're gonna kind of structure this is we have about four questions that we kind of took as a conglomeration of ideas and thoughts and conversations that have been going on for the past couple weeks. The candidates have not had the questions ahead of time. So we're gonna randomly have each one of them start. They'll have about four minutes for each question. Olivia Lowe's gonna help us keep time. So if you guys see her, raise her hand. Know that you have about a minute left. I'll try to keep an eye on it as well. And so these mics, if you can actually just hold them and share, that would be great, just to pick it up better. Okay, so... We're gonna start with a short one. So keep this question to about... Your answer to about a minute or so. This one's been on the minds and in the conversation, both in council and without. Erin, will you start?
Yes, sure.
Tell us what you value about public comment within city council chambers.
I value public comment because I think engaging with your government is essential to our democracy. I think our representatives do need to listen to the folks. I believe that if someone has the courage to actually come into chambers and share what's on their mind, they should be welcomed. I also believe that we should encourage other language speakers to be able to engage in chambers. And so that's one of my priorities, is to get language justice for all, so everyone can engage.
Great question. Okay, thanks. Hey, Kat, will you go next? What do you value about public comment?
How does this sound?
I think that might be better.
It's like you're eating an ice cream cone, is what I get told.
We'll just share that mic.
What I value about public comment is that public comment is like the first-person perspective, where you are the... The public are the ones that are seeing things firsthand. You're the ones experiencing it. So your voices and your opinions really do matter, because you are the ones that are gathering the information. You're the ones experiencing it. And we need to hear, because we're not everywhere. As you can see, we're one person. And already through our campaign, you can see even on our council and above, how busy someone can get trying to be everywhere. So having your guys' opinion is very important, because you are experiencing it every single day.
Thank you. Troy, you want to go next?
Sure. So I have a kind of a philosophical disagreement with the concept of a public comment. I think what we ought to do is call it public discussion. People from the public ought to feel comfortable enough to come down to their municipal government, put their name on a list, address the people that have been elected to serve the people of Loveland, say whatever is on their mind, and instead of talking to nine stone faces sitting up there, engage in conversation. Not debate, but if you want to come and tell about streets that are in poor repair, if you want to come and tell about fireworks, if you want to come talk about anything that's on your mind, councillors ought to feel free to engage with you in a respectful, meaningful way. You should be able to have a conversation. This country is based on a constitution, and that constitution is ratified only after the passage of the Bill of Rights. And the first one of those Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, it's not first by accident. It was first because it was the first priority. People wanted to have the right and the opportunity to protest, to address their government, to speak freely. And what we have seen with our Loveland City Council, at least for the last six years, certainly the last four years, is an absolute effort by certain members of the city council to quash the ability of you, or me, or anybody in our family, or any one of our neighbors, to come down and share a concern, to have a meaningful, beneficial, intelligent conversation with the people that have been elected. So I don't know what the hell the question was, actually. I just thought, well, I'll tell you this. I think it is important, and I promise you, if elected, I will respect anybody and everybody that comes before that city council to address anything that happens to be on your mind. And you will walk away feeling as though at least one person, and if you elect the people that will get in there and back up Jackie Marsh, at least five people, six people, were John Mallow. Who, by the way, statesmen. We could all take a lesson or two from John Mallow. But you will walk away feeling like that three minutes was worth the trip down to the city hall tonight. So, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
All right. Well, thanks for stealing my thunder, Troy. I'm the former teacher that gives the history. I too value public comment, and I think it's incredibly important in a representative form of government, where we are meant to represent our constituents, and so we need to hear from you. Not do I want to, I need to hear from you. And it goes just beyond hearing you. It goes... Is there a little echo? Am I okay? We're good? It goes beyond just me hearing you. It's me valuing what you have to say. And it's, as your representative, I need to listen with an open mind and an open heart, even if it's something that I don't want to hear, or it's a critique of me. And then I still welcome it, I still want it. So I think it's a very valuable question. I'm glad you asked it. And I think everyone up here would be up for listening with open minds and open hearts to public comment. Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll start with the longer answered questions. Okay. So first, I'll just recognize that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. So one of the big questions and big conversations going on right now surrounds inequity, inequality, diversity within not only our city, but our city government. So let's start with Troy. Troy, where do you see... Where does one place that you see inequity and inequality within the Loveland City Government? And what would you do to effect change in that area?
Well, actually, I think you see it everywhere you look, really. If you look at the people that work for the city... And I'm not trying to begrudge the employees or anything, but we do not show... We do not have the face of an inclusive government that recognizes equity among groups that are forgotten, groups that are suppressed, groups that are underrepresented. We don't have that. We don't have it with our leadership, barring Moses Garcia. You don't see diversity in the upper managerial ranks of the city of Loveland. You don't see it on the Loveland City Council. Sam's our mayor and Andrea Sampson. You're left... No offense, Mr. Mallow, but you're left with seven old white guys sitting up there. Six of them. So angry that they can't even carry on a meaningful conversation and who look down on anybody that doesn't fit their particular mold. You look at the various boards and commissions that we have. You don't see a lot of diversity. You don't see a lot of underrepresented groups. You don't hear voices from the groups that are suppressed or often overlooked or discounted. So there's a... It's not like there's something we can do. There's almost nothing we cannot do to improve the situation that we have. And I'm not going to try to be a politician and stand up here and act like I have the answers. I am an old white guy. I grew up in Loveland that predominantly was run by old white guys. I don't pretend to know how people who are of the underrepresented and the unrepresented class ethnicities, the groups feel or walk through life. What I will tell you is that my practice... I'm a lawyer. Don't hold that against me. Most of you already know that anyway, you still shut up. But my practice right now is devoted exclusively to defending indigent clients in criminal cases. That's it, that's all I do. I take court-appointed cases for indigent clients, many of whom are from those groups of people who we would consider to be underrepresented, misrepresented, and taken advantage of. So on a daily basis, and I don't say this to exaggerate, but on a daily basis, I stand in a courtroom in front of a judge against prosecutors who are trying to put these people in jail, and stand with them and defend them and fight for them every single day. That's my contribution of the moment to trying to help change the system.
Okay, thanks, Troy. Laura, you're next.
All right. You like knew it went right to me. Yeah, I have to agree with Troy. When you look at our boards, commissions, when you look at city council, when you look at those in the leadership positions, it's not very representative of the rest of Loveland. We're missing a lot of folks. When it comes to DEI, though, I think a lot of people make the mistake of thinking, "Well, we just need like a DEI charter, or a DEI statement, or a DEI policy statement, and that's enough." That means we'll be doing diversity, equity, and inclusion. But it goes beyond that. DEI is a journey. It's something that we are gonna have to think about with every policy decision that we make. And this means that we need to have additional stakeholders that we rely on to provide input, because we can do our best. But because we're not in every category, there's going to be things that we don't think about. And so I think a good place to start, should we get elected on council, is to have some kind of DEI statement. But then we need to have a plan. And when we think about all of the different policies, ordinances, resolutions that we are passing, that there is an equity piece to that that we have considered and that we have taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kat?
Thank you for the question. I love that city council says that we have made progress in this, because I'd have to agree with Troy on some things, that there is no progress. And from the point of any of us standing up there, whatever we do is going to be progress forward. There's a lot of places that we can look and have more open minds. And I think that sitting up here with all these people, these people are going to listen. They're going to listen to groups of diversity and of different races and backgrounds and bring more of that to our community and support it more than what has been supported on our board itself. So looking at who is up here before right now, we're in the positions that when we do get in there, we can support Jackie when she makes choices. When proclamations actually come to city council, it's an actual celebration. And we embrace it throughout the whole city, not just a few words at city council. We go out and embrace these events. We embrace these heritage. We embrace these groups that are trying to create safe spaces for our areas and for our communities, because a lot of us don't feel safe here. And that needs to change.
Well, I agree with all of you. I think it would be great for the city to have a DEI commission board. And when we're discussing issues, it could potentially turn into an ordinance or something new within the city that it has to go through, that commission. I think that would be a good idea. You know, there are a lot of folks already doing that work in this community that the city could go to. And specifically Caitlin Wirick with Heart and Soul, they're already doing this work in this community. So the city just has to back these organizations and these individuals that are already doing this work in our community. Back them up. And again, if you're having a proclamation for Latiné Heritage Month, get your buns out there and celebrate, city council. So again, I agree with Kat that it's not just about signing on a piece of paper. It's about getting involved, engaging with those community members, and letting them know that we're all in this together. Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the answer. Okay. So there's been a lot of talk over the last couple years about updating the city charter and how outdated it is and vague and kind of word-sality. So what would you change about the city charter and why? Laura, we'll start with you.
Oh, I'm so excited. I'm gonna take... We've actually... I feel bad, we've actually talked about this. There's two things that I would like to do, not... The only two things, but I'll only talk about two things I'd like to do to update the city charter. The first one is to implement some term limits. Yeah, so it was Thomas Jefferson who actually said that about every 30 years, there should be a revolution and we should replace our representatives with a new form of government. So woo-woo, TJ in the house. We need to implement some term limits for mayor and for city council. The other thing I'd like to enter in... There is already an ethics section, if you've read the city charter, but it's very weak, it's very vague, and it's mostly around what kind of gifts a mayor or a council member can accept. So we need to take that deeper and have clauses about reducing yourself from votes if you have a personal business that is going to be impacted by new decisions on council. Thank you.
Kat?
Yeah, I think our city charter actually needs a full look-through, every little piece of it. I have read it a couple times, and there's things that are missing. There's things that are incomplete. There's things that are so broad that they could be twisted in ways that are not in the benefit of the people. And that needs to change. We need to make sure that when we have a handbook like this, that it's something that we all can go off, and it's not gonna continuously change. Because as a new candidate, I feel that I've been confused most of the time, because so many things do change throughout this candidacy. I'm not sure where the lines are. And that's not fair for anyone after me who is going to be running. And that's not fair for anyone right now with trying to follow the rules. So as the charter changes, I agree with term limits. Those need to be applied. We also need to apply, if you are involved in anything, yes, you need to step away. You need to reclusive yourself, so you are not involved with any of the businesses. It's very simple. And there's probably a few more things in there, but off the top of my head, it really just needs a look at, because I think it's just very, very out of date.
Well, it is very out of date. Is it my turn? We're life buddies. Is it my turn, Amanda?
Yes. Go for it.
So why do we have a charter? Well, we have a charter because the citizens of Loveland wanted to become a home-rule city back in the late '80s, I believe. And in order to become a home-rule city in Colorado, you have to have a charter, an adopted charter, to break out of what's called a statutory town or a statutory city. You can govern yourself and not be governed by state law. That's why we have a charter. And we... One was developed. Rich Ball was on there. If you will look at it, there are a couple of the old Loveland lawyers that sat on that charter committee, and they adopted this charter. It hasn't really been changed since it was first adopted. In order to change the charter, though, all nine members of the city council can vote to change it, and it doesn't mean anything. Charter amendments can only be made by citizens of Loveland. You have to propose at an election to change or modify the existing charter. So the first thing that needs to be done, and I've advocated for this for now going on 10 years, let's put together a charter review commission of intelligent, non-biased, non-agenda people to look at the charter from the very first word to the very last word, and then make reasonable recommendations to council as to what should we try to change and what should the priority be. And then every year, every election cycle, throw out to the voters the request to make these amendments after they're prioritized. If I were to prioritize, the first thing that needs to be changed is that our charter says that the city manager and the city attorney, the two highest-ranking officials in the city of Loveland, can only be hired or fired by a supermajority of city council. We are one of two communities in all of Colorado that does not allow for a simple majority of their elected officials to make a change in leadership. People don't know that. So let's assume and celebrate that the four of us and Jackie Marsh continue in their role, continues the role, that we get five new voices on the city council. That's the good news. The bad news is that all five of us could decide we're gonna get a new leadership team on board, and there's nothing we can do about it. We, five people, the majority cannot hire or fire, and I'm not gonna put anyone on the spot, but it is a challenge to change leadership. So the first thing I would do is amend that charter so that a majority of council, a majority of the elected people of the city, can make leadership changes as necessary. And I will say this, at the moment, it's necessary. And I'm happy to go on the record and make that statement.
Well, I agree with all of them. Term limits, number one, has to happen. Currently, our mayor serves for two years, as long as they get elected, and four years for council members, as long as you can get elected. I think those should be four-year terms. I think the mayor should be a four-year term instead of a two-year term. So those would be some things that I would change. Also, our ethics section needs to be beefed up, and we all know how that can be done, because the trust commission handed it to them on a silver platter. Beyond that, conduct. She reminded me of that. Conduct can be regulated on the dais, even though our city attorney, Moses, has said in a meeting that it can't be. It can be, it should be, and there should be consequences if it's violated. I think that should be included in our city charter as well. And I think that's all I'll add. I agree with everybody up here with the city charter. It definitely needs to be looked at and beefed up, because it's not about the people, it's about the position and the longevity. Long after all of us are gone and we've served, it's for somebody else to do then. And they might not have the same integrity as the four of us up here do. So it's about position, setting this up for people in positions that does not change. And that definitely needs to be beefed up in our city charter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next question. What do you think... We'll start with Kat on this one. What do you think has been the biggest mistake that you've seen city council make over the past four years? Just one, just one.
Such a negative question. It's an opportunity for growth.
It is.
I think that for city council, they are up against every single day, listening to our community, making decisions every single day for everyone. And that is a difficult position to be in, because you are getting it from all angles. You're getting it from everyone. And something that our city council has not done well is been honest, has been forward about what they are and who they are dealing with, and not stepping away from the dais when they need to. There are... Those things have not been the most impressive in how they fight with each other. It just feels like a waste of time. I started to go to city council, and I started timing how long they argue and writing it on my piece of paper, because it started feeling like a waste of time. And this is something that I do feel that is not good for our city council. And I'm gonna leave it with that, because there is a lot of examples that I think a lot of us will feel to love to share, but that is something that they have been epically failing at, is communication, honesty, and accountability.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I agree with Kat, but I'm gonna take a... The flies up. I'm gonna take a more policy-driven answer for mine and speak specifically to Ward 4, so that's the east side of Loveland. So that's the east side of Loveland. And I would say one of our biggest mistakes is the diversion of tax revenue in certain deals. And these are certain deals that we make with a certain developer that we don't, we don't make those same kinds of deals with other developers. So it's not necessarily like it's an economic necessity. And so I'm speaking a bit vaguely here on purpose, but specifically, it's, it's setting up your rates on undeveloped farmland that is not blight and pretending that it is blight so that we can divert our property tax for twenty-five years to one particular developer. And that same thing, our metro tax districts. The city of Loveland has allowed metro tax districts to run amok. They can be done well, and they can be done poorly, but they require some level of oversight. And the city of Loveland has chosen not to oversee any, any piece of it. So those are the two, opportunities for growth is what I'm gonna call it rather than mistakes. We have an opportunity for growth in those areas. Thank you.
Erin?
You're so positive, Laura. I love that.
Couple of things, Sintera South, blighting farmland, giving raises to city manager and our city attorney. The Karen Garner incident. Boy, they, that's an opportunity for growth, right there. Now, I'll call that a big fat mistake that actually left our patrol officers and their families as a scapegoat. And that was wrong and that was dangerous. And so our city council should have stepped up, taken a leadership role, and did the right thing and terminated those that needed to be terminated immediately. Get those that are covering up and lying out of there. There's corruption happening in our city government. That's a mistake, because we're done with it. Now, they've got big pockets. So these four people here, I don't know about Troy necessarily, but these three people here, we're walking the streets and asking for individual donations. They have a committee who's giving them all, they don't even spend any time on their literature and their mailings and drop and lit. They don't do any of that. We're the ones listening to people knocking on doors and saying, what do you want city council to focus on? And you know what? They remember Karen Garner. They're still not healed from that. They still don't trust our police department. And the trust commission's job is still not over. And so that's why I'm sitting up here. That was the precipice for me getting on the trust commission. And that's why I'm still here. And I'm watching, and I'm making sure that those folks at the LPD are going to do the right thing. Implement what you're supposed to implement. Accountability and transparency, that's been the mistake that city council has made. Thank you.
Hey, Troy, can you follow that?
Oh, yeah.
Mistakes.
Oh, mistakes. Slow clock, well, they did slow clock, all right? Yeah, it was all a one. You can't hardly go to a city council meeting without watching mistakes in progress. It is, it's, they have turned city council into a joke. I mean, and it's not terribly funny, but it is a joke nonetheless. This metro districts, metro districts have a place and a time and an opportunity. But as these councillors strut around, high-stepping, high-fiving each other about all they've done for affordable and attainable housing, how can they say that when they've passed every single metro district that comes before them? They have driven the cost of housing up through the roof with these metro districts. And they don't even care. And John Fogel, and pardon me, Laura, Jessica, I listened to the poem you read, and I really am gonna try to be kind. It's not in my nature, all right? It's not in my nature. When I hear John Fogel running around talking about, oh, but we've got the best disclosure in the state of Colorado when it comes to metro districts, that means nothing. You know what that disclosure means to me? It means the same thing that's on a pack of cigarettes. The surgeon general says smoking these things could kill you. It hasn't done a lot to save many lives. These disclosures for metro districts haven't done a thing to save people from walking into a financial disaster when they buy a house and then give their HOA dues and, lo and behold, two tax bills, one that was run by the developer before that first house was ever built. Metro districts, mistake number one. Mistake number two is this absolute giveaway to McWinnies. I'm not afraid to say it, McWinnie, McWinnie, McWinnie. And I'm here to say, no, 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 all right? McWinnies will get due process, they will get a fair hearing if I'm on city council, but I damn sure will not be telling them, yes, 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 a year and a half before they show up to make their presentation. They should not be treated any differently than ma and pa developer that show up and want to do the right thing in Loveland. I'm sick of it, real sick of it, but it's not a secret. The McWinnies have been given, we ought to just change the town of Loveland's name to McWinnie Loveland, whatever. But enough is enough with it. And when you go down there and you watch the city council act like they're making these spontaneous decisions on things that are so complicated that if you studied it for a year, you wouldn't even understand it. And here these geniuses are down there making these spontaneous decisions that somehow always oddly end up in favor of McWinnie. It's wrong, I don't like it, I'm not ashamed to say it, and I promise, you, they will not get the friendly, arm-open welcoming from me as they do from the current five down there.
I just wanna point out that those are four very different personalities coming out in that question. Very different, but that's who they are. And they all can work together. And the four different personalities will create some synchronicity. Anyway, okay, next question. Okay, we'll start with Troy on this one. Okay, so when, if and when the grocery tax elimination passes, there have been talks about budget cuts and personnel cuts and, you know, some fear tactics, but maybe, maybe budget cuts will have to happen. How would you handle cutting the budget? Where would you cut it from? And how would you work with your other councillors to make sure that the city is taken care of?
Well, first of all, one, the grocery sales tax should be repealed. Those of you who have followed Loveland for ten years or more know, I have never been shy in that. In fact, when I was on council, go research it, I made a motion one night, late night, and I'm sitting there and looking around thinking, well, who's absent? Oh, I know who's absent. The tax, the tax, the grocery tax Loveland crap. All right, Troy, you got anything to add? I do. I move that we repeal the grocery tax on food in Loveland. And my friend Hugh McKean says, I second that. We took a vote and it passed. We actually repealed the grocery tax through ordinance that night. And then all hell broke loose. And in a strange turn of events, the way the world works, some of the people that were opposed to us cutting the tax showed up en masse. I mean, council was full. And on second reading, all of those who supported repealing the grocery tax, five of them bailed out, and we couldn't get it passed on second reading, all right? So then I suggested, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we step the thing down? Let's repeal one percent this year, see what it looks like, see what it sounds like, see how it shakes out. And if it's not as devastating as y'all think, next year, we'll click it down another percent. And in three years, we might successfully be able to repeal the grocery sales tax from an informed point of view and know whether or not we're actually burning the town down. So that idea was met with, oh, you know, that's a stupid idea. We're not talking about it, move on to the next thing. McWinnies have a proposal, we need to move on and do something. If you sat through and listened to Waldes talk to the council during his forecast of gloom and doom, there were a few nuggets you could have picked out of what he said. And one of those things was, we have enough in reserves, we have enough money to weather year one. We don't have to cut a single job, we don't have to cut a single program. We can make it through at least one here with the reserves that we have. All right, well, asking Waldes to predict what's gonna happen if the sales tax is repealed is similar to asking Weatherman Bowman, what will August nineteenth of 2024 be because I'm planning a wedding? They don't know. He'll tell you, well, it's gonna be warm, but that's about all I can tell you. It'll be warmer than it would be on December twenty-fourth. It sounds like a much better day to plan a wedding than it would be on Christmas Eve. These guys don't know. They are making gloom and doom forecasts because it's political. They don't really care about whether or not the sales tax is repealed. What they care about is that the people that have been out there circulating these petitions don't represent the Fogels, the Overcash, the Olsen, and the Fords. I'm getting a cutoff, you know where I'm headed with this. But I don't, we, we would look at the budget in a, in a, from a knowledge-based perspective and make reasonable decisions and choices if we had to. I don't think we would.
Okay. Go ahead, Erin.
Well, that one's a hard one to follow. You know, the budget's super complicated and, but I also heard when Brian Waldes said, we're good to go for 2024, regardless whether that passes or not. So he did make that statement. So I'm feeling comfortable with that. Also, I come from the nonprofit world, and we're bare bones as it is. And so if we don't discuss and brainstorm cuts, we talk about revenue streams. Where can we get more revenue streams? How can we become more efficient in our programming? Those are the types of conversations that I would elect to have in lieu of immediately scaring the hell out of our city employees who have already been working for many years in a toxic environment, mind you. So this is kind of the icing on the cake for them. And when they talk about from the dais, the current council, that this is putting them in a, an environment that is hard to work in and they're losing them. Our retention and turnaround rate has been skyrocketing for years and years and years in the city of Loveland. So this is not the reason why folks have decided to leave. They're done with the wishy-washiness and the city council not caring about their city employees. Do you remember the employee engagement survey results? Did anybody read through those? They're abysmal when it comes, when it comes to, we fear retaliation for speaking up. So why would I think that they would treat them any differently now? This is par for the course for this specific city council, the majority on city council. And they don't value their city employees or they would not be working in a toxic environment for this long. We give raises to the exact city leadership positions that got the lowest marks in the employee survey. And that was our city attorney's office and our city manager's office. So that might be where I cut some fat from the budget. That's all I'll have to say about that. Thank you.
Oh, gosh. Thank you, Erin. I think what a lot of people fail to realize is that the reasoning behind eliminating the tax on food for human consumption, and there's a belief among some, and I think it's everyone here tonight, that you don't tax something that somebody needs to live, especially our most vulnerable. And we know that food tax disproportionately affects those of lower income. And if we want to walk the DEI walk, then that means that city council has to fight as hard for those at the bottom as we do for those at the top. We need to represent those that do not have the courage, the ability, the know-how to go to city council and to lobby them and to make backroom deals. We need to represent those folks that are really struggling. And that's what the food tax, eliminating the food tax would do. If you listen to Brian Waldes numerous presentations, again, the first year were good, and it's not like come January, ten point five million is gone, it's going to be a slow burn. However, what has been brought up many times, and if you look at economic studies of the other thirty-five percent of Colorado that also doesn't tax for food, they found that those people spent the money in the economy anyway. It went back in through the sales tax in various routes. Brian also did not take into account the full amount of our property tax assessments. They went up thirty percent. He took into account only a twenty percent raise. He also didn't take into account any of the new things that are coming down the pike, like the two thousand homes that are slated to be built next year or that Amazon plant finishing up. So I don't think we're going to have to do a darn thing to the budget. I can tell you what I will do, and that will be fighting for those people in Loveland who need the most help. And that's what this measure does. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was just so good listening. So as we've seen, when we look at this budget, we have, they've been talking about it at city council over and over again. This last time that they came and had a discussion about it, they did discuss that they would not, of all the things that were coming in, for the first time, they talked about all the money that was actually gonna come in. And when they started talking about it, they started talking about the revenue, and then they just kind of stopped. And they're like, and that's what it is. And that's the revenue that'll come in and will be even for this amount of time. And then they just kept going on. So they have looked at the budget, they have seen that it is possible. But what we can do up here is, like Laura said, have a voice for the people who are working hard, who are out there getting those signatures, who are the people who are gonna benefit from that food tax. It does go back into our city, and it does affect our lower income. And that is something that we haven't focused on as city council in a very long time. And by saying yes to this, this is an opportunity for city council to do one for the community. And I'm very surprised that they are fighting this so hard because it is not something that is going to break us. It would do more for our community than anything. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna do one more question, and then we'll open it up to everybody out there or online that wants to ask questions. Okay, so since you all decided to run, I'm sure you gained a little bit of a different perspective on not, it may be just paid attention a little bit closer to not only city council, but to the community in your conversations and at city council meetings. So over the past few months, what have you discovered? That, and I'm sorry, this might be a little bit negative, Kat, the language. What have you discovered that pisses you off the most about Loveland? But also, but also, what have you discovered that you love the most about Loveland? Kat, you're starting.
Oh, what pisses me off and what I love? Okay, what kind of pisses me off? Is that what I've learned is that there are only a few that are truly doing damage in our city. And they have their hands on so many things that it is damaging across the board. And it is deep. And that is what pisses me off the most. And it's taking a toll on our community. It's not, and it's a small amount. There's only a few who truly are doing a grand amount of damage. And it is not helping any of us who are trying our damnedest to be up here and be good people and fight for your voices. The thing I love most about this community, to switch over to that, is that Loveland is beautiful of how our community does have a voice. And they are sick and tired of money being given away to billionaires and millionaires and watching our beautiful town be destroyed. And what I love is that you're all pissed off with me. So thank you.
What pisses me off about Loveland? We've got some serious traffic issues, very distracted drivers. They're driving really fast, they're not paying attention. For everybody here tonight, watch out for the motorcycles, please. We lost a good one. We lost a good one this last few weeks from a distracted driver. And so that pisses me off. Drive and pay attention when you're driving. What I love about Loveland is its absolute beauty. This place, and I've been all over, trash everywhere, dilapidated this over here and this over here. Literally, it looks like no one cares about their feet's other cities. That is not what Loveland looks like. I have people come here to visit, and they're like, "Man, you have all these parks, you have all these trails, everything's beautiful, it's not trashy." That's right. Loveland does provide great services, and that's why Parks and Rec gets one of the highest survey ratings from this community. It's because they do a fantastic job. And they will not be cut. So I love Loveland's beauty, and every time I'm out on a walk, I keep picking up the trash. So I encourage everybody, pick up the trash. Thanks.
Laura?
All right, thank you. What pisses me off? I guess what's... I'm gonna try to explain, and I'll get there to what pisses me off. I guess I naively assumed that when I got more and more involved in the community, I would look to my elders who are in the leadership positions, which is something we all noticed in our D E I conversation. But I was looking to my elders on council on these boards and commissions, and like Kat noticed, so much squabbling. Literally, my freshmen were more mature than these men up here squabbling and unable to come to an agreement. And it's all based on who they like and who they don't like, and has nothing to do with policy, it has nothing to do with the citizens. So I get pissed off at the sheer waste of it all. I would expect more from my elders, and I... those elders in particular. And then on the other side of things, what do I love the most? Well, I have been here since I was in eighth grade. My parents moved us here. But my great-grandmother lived here, and so we had always been in and out of Loveland growing up. And this was a beautiful place to grow up and to live and to mature. And I had wonderful teachers and community members who took an interest in my well-being. I worked at the Loveland Public Library when I was in college. My mom retired. From there, she's over there, Lolly Way. That's Miss Lolly from the library. Yeah, so we've dedicated our lives here to Loveland. And while I'm disappointed in some of my elders in leadership positions, I look at those that were my elders growing up in high school and as a young adult, and I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude. And then I see Jackie Marsh at a farmer's market, and she grats onto me and she says, "Laura, you mentioned once you wanted to run for city council." And I said, "Yeah, like later, you know, when I..." Certainly, I'm not the best candidate. And she goes, "You have to run." And so that means something when the mayor of your town believes in you that much. And then these people stepped up and they said, "Laura, we're here to help you. Here's where I got my pliers. Here's where I did this. Here's who you need to contact about that." We have June and Gary, who are my neighbors, and they made me buttons and they canvassed for me, and they do all of this just because they believe in me. We have Bob, who comes and helps me with anything I need. "Oh, you need to talk to this person. You can talk to that person. He's a friendly ear to listen to when I need to vent." I have Ann Blair, another neighbor. There she is in the back. She... this lady goes out and canvasses for me like three or four times a week. So that's what I love about Loveland, is the community of people here who are willing to step up and help one another and recognize strength in one another. And that's what makes Loveland the way it is. And so we need to have a city council that represents that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, close it out, Troy. If you can think of anything that pisses you off. Go for it.
I'm gonna start backwards. I'll tell you what I love about this place. I was actually born and raised here. And I went to Washington Elementary School, which is now the City Hall. City Council chambers at one time was the principal's office. So I actually spent more time in council chambers before I got on council than I did when I got on council. I went to Washington Elementary School. I went to Garfield Elementary School. I went to Bill Regent High, and I went to the new school, Thompson Valley. First class to go all three years through. Took me four, but I was the first class to go all three years through. My dad was a bartender over here at the Hut. I can barely not walk a street or ride my bicycle in Old Town Loveland, and I just have a fond memory of somebody that I knew, something that I did, some trouble that I got into, or people that got me into trouble. I told the story the other day. I got into... I was a policeman in my first career. I retired as a cop in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-seven. And I was fascinated. I always wanted to be a policeman. And the reason I wanted to be a policeman is when I grew up down here on Third Street, there was a cop that sat out in front of our house every day and watched the crosswalk. And this had to be before I was in kindergarten, because I would go out and I would talk to this police officer. I just loved him. And he let me sit in a police car. And he would ask me, "Do you want to turn the red lights? Do you want to play with the styler?" And I was just... that was Loveland going up. I later found out who that policeman was. His name was Pat Steele. He was the police chief of Loveland that used to sit out there and watch the crosswalk. That's the Loveland I remember. That's the Loveland that is gone, and we can never bring it back. We're not gonna bring Woolsworth back downtown so we can go sit at the cafe and have a cheeseburger for fifty-five cents or whatever. We're not bringing J C Penney's back so I could rip my new pair of jeans before the beginning of school year. Those things are gone, but the character of Loveland isn't built. It's been overlooked a little bit by those that we have elected to be on our city council. There's so much I love about Loveland. Now, what pisses me off? Can they get another four minutes, Olivia? No, all right. Here's what pisses me off, is that the public has been so apathetic in watching what's going on at that city hall that we have elected a clown show to run this place for at least the last four, if not six, years. People need to pay attention and get involved and find out what's going on with our government down here and our city council, who's more interested in handing out to their favorite developer, McWinnie, than they are about worrying about whether or not Grandma and Grandpa or a single parent can afford to get their lunch meat and their milk and their bread at the grocery store, and are worried that we might take a three percent sales tax down on essential food items for the average working person. That's what pisses me off. We can change that. You are part of that change.
Okay, thanks, guys. Before we do a little wrap-up, let's do some questions from you all. Anybody have a question for any of them? Yeah.
Are you gonna make them sign in first in three minutes or...
I'm wondering what you're planning to do about the homeless issue.
Okay, just so... I'm gonna repeat so the recording can hear it. She's asking if any of the council... the future council members have ideas about the unhoused community. Anybody can start. Go for it.
About all of us.
Yeah.
Free for all. There's a lot of things that we need to do that is probably a big approach of involving a lot of people as well. From what I have learned and what from Erin has learned, we've been going to a lot, as many meetings as we can, that, you know, it's been really confusing who's in charge. For me, I'm just like, who's in charge? Who are we going to? We go to the city. City says they don't want to be in charge. We go to the homeless task force, they don't want to be in charge. The affordable housing, they don't want to be in charge. And there's meetings that we can and cannot go to, and it's very confusing already at that level. So if that is already confusing at that level, that we don't even have a systematic or a structure in plan, I really don't know where else to go. And from what I have learned, we need to start in some structural form where we actually can approach this and have answers for you. Because right now, I feel like it needs exploring, it needs way more data, and what we have is just inefficient.
Do I have to pick?
I'm gonna go. Thank you, Erin. And I hope I'm not stealing her thunder, because what I'm about to say, she sent me an email a long time ago. But several years ago, the city of Loveland paid the Denver Center on Poverty to analyze our unhoused issue and provide recommendations. And they... I read the report. Erin sent it to me. It's called the Burns Report, and it provides everything the city of Loveland should be doing. It designates one of our nonprofits as the leader, who's gonna help coordinate all of this, and they agreed to do it. And our city council stepped back from that Burns Report and said, "We don't like it. We don't want to do this. We're gonna go our own way." Then they had to hire a mediator to come in just to get a policy statement. So the city of Loveland was just gonna try to craft a policy statement that we could operate off of to tackle the homeless issue. And they were incapable of doing that with a mediator who was walking around the room and kept saying, "I'm gonna try to bring us back on track. I'm gonna try to bring us back on track." So yeah, we need a policy statement. That's the beginning. Maybe we dig out that Burns Report and find out what data in there is still useful, what data needs to be updated, and then we need to select our go-to organization, and then we need to support the hell out of it. That's what I would need to have.
I agree with that. The Burns Report, if you have a chance to look at that, do so. It's... should still be available online. If not, reach out and we'll send you a link to it. You know, all of the agencies and people that were involved, called stakeholders, that were involved in getting the information to the Burns Center, okay? They're still all the same people that are involved now in the homeless task force, Homeward Alliance. Here's what's happening. The majority on city council don't like those ideas. They don't want to take care of these humans. Period. So every time there's a consultant that comes in, or somebody, you know, nationally-known, we pay all this money for their advice, and then we say, "Well, we don't like that." And then they don't follow it. And then we're gonna keep doing this over and over and over. So what needs to happen is a majority on city council that will say, "Hey, you're the subject matter experts. You've been working with this demographic for years and years and years. This is your mission with your agency. What can we do to support you?" That's what the city's role is in that. And we need a appropriate brick-and-mortar building. The one that we have is not appropriate. It's not safe. It's actually a liability issue for the city right now, here today. We could be sued at any moment. So that's... but we have a NIMBY problem, not in my backyard. So do any of you want the homeless shelter by your home? Would you be okay with it? Because that might... you might be asked to do that. And so I would encourage every one of you to talk to folks about that, because at some point, these agencies are going to find a potential location, and they are going to ask the community, "This is the location we feel like is a viable option. Do not be the people that say, 'Not in my backyard.'" That's not who we are as a community. Thank you.
Amanda, give me the question again, because I wanna make sure I get this. It was your question.
Yep.
And it was, "What are we gonna do about the homeless? What are we gonna do to help them?" What was your question?
Yes, we're gonna do to help them or to see if there's a problem.
Right. Well, it's not a Loveland problem. It's a national problem. And it requires more than a city council, Steve Olson showing clips of Tucker Carlson to the council of Tucker Carlson's ideas on what to do with the homeless population. We've spent four million dollars so far, and what do we have to show for it? Tent City. It doesn't work. It has only exacerbated the problem. So we know the things not to do. We have a subject matter expert on staff. Her name's Allison Hay. Allison is connected. Allison is connected to the people that we would call homeless. She knows the most of them by name. She goes out, she has... she counts their heads every year. She can tell us precisely who they are, what their needs are, what they're all about. And the last time I saw her presentation in front of city council, she received a hostile, downgraded... she was treated like one of us major coyotes. And it's shameful how the city council treated their own subject matter expert, who is dialed into Loveland's problem and could offer real-time solutions that would work for Loveland, and she was basically... casted. It was shameful. I don't know that a city council, regardless of who you elect, will come into... they won't have the wisdom or knowledge to solve this problem, because if they did, the problem wouldn't exist. There's so much more deep rooted to the homelessness situation. And as I talked to you about, my clientele, indigenous people in jail facing serious charges, some of them have come out of Tent City accused of trying to kill one another. There are problems of addiction. There are problems of mental illness. There are problems of combination of both of those. There are combinations of people who just, for whatever reason, have given up on life. We need to really understand what has brought people to that desperate situation before we can try to understand how to solve that problem. It's not necessarily about putting a roof over someone's head and making sure that they have clean clothes or a laundry or a bathroom facility, because that'll take care of the immediate need, but it doesn't address the long-term ongoing need. And those are such difficult, such difficult issues that I don't know that a city council is gonna find the answer. But I will tell you one thing, this city council should be operating in concert with Fort Collins, with Greeley, with Windsor, with Timnuth, with Johnstown, with Longmont, looking for the best possible solutions for all of us, because shuffling our homeless problem to Fort Collins or Longmont or Greeley or to the outskirts of Loveland isn't a solution at all. And if other communities have that same mentality and they're just bringing it... this is a serious problem. Bottom line is, I don't know what the answer is, but I know it's a hell of a lot more difficult to solve, and I'm gonna say it again, than Steve Olson dragging in clips of Fox News, Tucker Carlson, talking about it. And it's also more complicated than some of the minister... ministerial-oriented service organizations can fix on their own. They're part of the answer, but they are not the answer. So it's... all right, that's over four minutes.
Thanks, Troy. Okay. Next question, Shane, you wanna go ahead?
Shane Ritter, Ward One. I'll preface the question with some quick facts. Over the last hour before I've sat up here, at least thirteen people have died of overdose around this country. I think we're all aware that this country is experiencing a crisis in overdose deaths. Even outside of opioids, those overdose rates have gone up fifty times, right? Exponentially. I sit on the Lurin County Opioid Abatement Council. A current city councillor who also sits on that council with me, Steve Olson, has said that the Loveland City Council does not want harm reduction and needle exchange services in Loveland. What we know is that harm reduction and needle exchange services are one of the most effective tools for helping people, meeting them where they are if they're suffering an addiction, meeting them where they are and giving them an opportunity to find abstinence, recovery, medically assisted treatment, or any other things they may need for their mental health. So I would ask the four of you, where would you stand on having a permanent harm reduction, needle exchange in Loveland that's not funded by the Loveland taxpayers, but funded by a reputable nonprofit doing this work in Fort Collins that wants to be here?
Good question. Okay. Kat, would you mind starting that one?
I fully support this. I don't know why we don't have one. It is very useful, and it does a great job in Fort Collins, and it has shown great results. Like Shane said, I'm very surprised that Steve Olson voiced for the whole entire city council that they were all against that. That seems unfair and not correct. And if so, then I think I would like to ask city council one more time. And I know as me, standing up here, that is something I would support, because it has shown factually that it is something that works.
Thank you.
I agree. I witnessed that meeting along with you, Shane. I was online, watching the opioid meeting, and yeah, there were... his comment got crickets, because there was actually one gal from Fort Collins that said, "With all due respect, the Fort Collins City Council does not vote on harm reduction services because they don't... they don't pay for harm reduction services. These are agencies in our community that provide these services. We don't really have... we have no authority to tell them that they can provide them."
that they can provide that service or not." We actually currently do the same nonprofit that... that does harm reduction in Fort Collins. They also do a little bit here. But the reason why that came up in that meeting was because they were asking for additional funding from a grant, that's exactly what it should be used for, for extra supplies, okay? And I'll tell you, our Narcon, what was it, Shane, our Narcon kids between February and July were ten thousand, about ten thousand picked up. So, these are needed services. And so you really have to decide, do you wanna save lives? Do you care about saving lives? And I think as a city, we should care about saving lives. And the data shows, over and over and over, that if you meet somebody where they're at, you establish a trusting relationship when they're ready, which has been shown, they stay in recovery longer coming out of harm reduction programs, and they have a greater success rate. So the data's there. It's evidence, it's proven, and it should be supported here in Loveland, because it saves lives every day.
Can you just mention what the nonprofit is, so everybody knows?
Was that Colorado Care Alliance? Colorado Care Alliance offers those services, and they're a recipient of the opioid abatement settlement monies that the state of Colorado and our northern region received. And so, the Regional Opioid Abatement Council decides that. And our current city council has Olson as the representative. And that's not the first time that he's serving as liaison at a board or commission, and he speaks for the entire city council, happens all the time. Because that's all I've been doing, is attending all these boards and commissions, just to kinda get up to speed, meet the people who have been serving, giving their time, they're volunteers as well. And the liaising needs to be tightened up. Something written down that these folks can follow, including us when we're elected. There should be something written down on, "This is how you liaison, and these are the things you're not allowed to do, and these are the things you are allowed to do." So, that needs to be tightened up, a little bit more accountability. But I'm in favor of that. Thanks for being on that, council.
Yes. I am also in favor of a needle program and a reduced harm risk program. I think one of the themes that I keep seeing as I listen to these boards and commissions and city council meetings, and I read these reports, and I'm digging back, is that our council will get data. They will get a solution handed to them. They will get reports handed to them. They will have subject matter experts who come to them and say, "This is what we need to do. I just need your support." And our council looks at it, and they say, "Well, I don't like it, so we're not gonna do it." So, I would like to bring data-driven approaches to city council, because those exist out there. We don't always have to reinvent the wheel. A lot of that work is already being done, and we could lean on our boards and commissions to help us lead the way, and we can just be supporters of that. And I think another thing to think about, as a former high school teacher, we always, when we think about somebody who's struggling with an opioid addiction, we always imagine, I think we imagine some older, middle-aged person that's had something horrible happen in their life, and now they're addicted. And what people don't understand is it's your fourteen-year-olds. My co-teacher and I had to call 911, had a kid run to the nurse, and we had to perform first aid on a student, because he had overdosed at lunch, and then walked into our classroom and collapsed. It's fourteen-year-olds that are doing this. It's twenty-year-olds, it's men, it's women, it's everyone in between. It's rich and poor. So again, if we're going to take D E I seriously, that includes the people in our community that have problems, and our role should be to support them. So yes, I'm in favor of that program.
Well, Shane, it's an easy answer. The answer is yes. Why would we not have it in Loveland? It costs us nothing. What's the danger in having it? None. What's the benefit? Untold. But there are definitely benefits that would go along with having a needle exchange program. So, the answer is yes. But, since I got three or four minutes, I'm gonna go on. What's most troubling about this whole scenario is that Steve Olson makes this announcement at a public meeting, stating that the Loveland City Council does not want this program, and yet the Loveland City Council never decided it. He's able to speak for the Loveland City Council, because he does what they do every week. He knows, well, Overcash, Foley, Fogel, Sampson, probably, everybody, except maybe Councillor Malo and the mayor. They already, they speak for one another. They already know what the results of any question asked of them are going to be, because they all think alike. It's their agenda of hate, and I'm not embarrassed to say that. It is an agenda of hate with Overcash, and with Olson, and with Fogel, and apparently with Foley, if you've watched him, he's unhinged at best. It's an agenda of hate. And anything we can do... Who? Who else?
We said "add e." Don't mind that.
Oh, yeah, "add e." Good, not... This agenda, this current city council is basically to punish and to harm anybody that does not look, act, and think like me. And that's all, and it's time to get rid of them. I'm gonna say this, whether I win or lose, I really, I mean, I wanna win. I'm in this thing to win. I don't get in things to lose. It doesn't matter whether I'm playing checkers with my six-year-old granddaughter or running for city council. I wanna win, even though I have to cheat my granddaughter sometimes. But more important than that, I want Laura to win, because she'll be a great representative to take over Overcash's seat, which we know will be vacant. I desperately want Erin Black to win, so we can once and for all be done with John Foley. I want you to win. And it hurts me to say this, because I was one of Andrea Sampson's biggest supporters. It hurts me to say this, but Kat, I desperately want you to win and replace Andrea Sampson in the city.
Okay. Okay, let's do one more question. Go ahead, sir.
Well, my name is Steve, who's fellow with West Delta. I wanted to ask you about compensation and ethics. Laura referred to the charter. We hear that certain members are in cahoots with big business. They are in bad with McWinnies, and all these terms. But do councilors, in fact, benefit? I know you get paid about a hundred dollars a month. But what are the benefits that they're getting, perhaps unethically? And what would you do about that? And the second part of that, of course, is when you're a councillor, how will you be disinterested from somebody paying for stuff for you, playing for your golf, your restaurant? I don't know what the reasons are, but I'd like to share that issue.
You wanna take that one? Yeah, can I get first? Troy will probably have the better answer, since he's the lawyer, but I'm gonna go first, since I brought up the ethics.
You don't trust a lawyer with that question?
Well, I trust you specifically, not every lawyer. Yeah, I think the, and we don't know this for sure, and so, and then you'll tell me if I'm getting myself in any trouble. But all of our members of council have businesses that they run. And the rumors, the whispers, are that a lot of the businesses that this current city council run are tangentially related to certain developers like McWinnie, for example. And so when McWinnie needs something done, he goes to their businesses, and he's a very large, you know, real estate developer, and so they benefit from these deals. So how would we cut down on that, though? What's to say that, I don't have a small business, my husband and I have a small business, so what's to say that I wouldn't do the same thing? Well, I think one of the changes in the charter needs to include that you disclose your business and your business dealings. Who are you working with, those stakeholders? And then if that stakeholder is coming onto city business, then I would have to say, "I can't vote." And if I tried to, my fellow councilors would remind me, "Laura, you can't vote on this. This could be related to your business." And so I think that's a good first step. I don't think you're ever gonna actually be able to check all the ways that someone could be unethical, and skeezy, and, you know, use their power. So you have to think about the type of people that you're voting for. As a former high school teacher, as someone who loves this town, loves this community, and who believes in our government, and who taught it passionately for years to my students about how this is one of the best forms of government, you cannot serve if you're doing it because you're hoping to make deals and connections out of it. And so none of us are up here for that. None of us are up here to be compensated. We're up here because we wanna serve and move Loveland in the right direction and actually listen to our constituents. Great, great question. Thank you.
So do I have evidence? Is that what you're looking for? Because I personally don't have evidence sitting at my house in my basement that they're gaining some sort of financial gain from the dealings. What I will tell you is, if you have a consulting company, it's all about networking. Most businesses, it's all about networking. This is a very small region. Very small town, northern Colorado, Laramie County, very, very small. And so, it's all about networking, so it makes sense that those folks need consultants on a myriad of issues, and they know exactly who they can send their buddies to for those consultants. Otherwise, why else would they be voting that way? They're either stupid, or they're getting some sort of gain from it. And I don't know, maybe it's just power. Maybe they like thinking they have a friend that's a millionaire. You know, that's what people thought with Trump. "Oh, he likes us." No, he would never have lunch with you, okay? So, I don't know exactly what their main motivation is. They're gaining something from it. I'm not that ambitious, okay? I've always served. I've never tried to gain something from anybody. And so whether it was my professional or personal life, I give service. I don't expect, I don't need anything from anybody. So that's why I'm a safe bet, because I don't need you to pay for my coffee. My husband provides very well for my family. And so, I don't have ambitions to have power. My ambition is for this town, so my little neighbor kids can afford to live here, and it's still safe for them, and that they can have a quality education. That's why I'm here, and you can bet on, I won't be taking any favors or lunches from anybody.
Thank you for your question. It does seem like specifically, we have people that are being motivated by money. And that is very disheartening. I am not motivated by money. I grew up as a farm kid, and you have what you have, and you make the best with what you have. And this is not a job that I think any of us are getting into for the money. And if you really look at your candidates, you can see that we have had people not representing us in ways, that have gotten distracted. And something that I've learned in being a first-time candidate is that you're in this for the heart, or you're in this for your profession. And it's pretty blatantly, who's in for their profession and careers, and who is here for their heart and the service of their people.
Okay, Troy, one minute answer.
Sir, your question was code of ethics. We don't need to change the charter to do that. The city council can pass an ordinance that says this is our code of ethics, and if you violate it, it's punishable by, it's like any other ordinance. You break the law, it'd be punishable. And we could detail, "If you have a financial interest, or even the appearance of a financial interest, you shall recuse yourself and make it known to your fellow council members and to the public." Do I have evidence? Yes. I posted on my Facebook, John Foley doing an infomercial for the McWinnies. My God, he's on there, three, four years ago, talking about McWinnies are the best thing you ever had to Loveland. We just, basically, they bring a proposal in, we rubber stamp it, turn it over, and miracles happen. Now, does that show, does that show that he's corrupt? No, but does it give the appearance that he could be? Absolutely. I just posted today, "McWinnies are out putting up a Don Overcash sign on McWinnie property." A McWinnie pickup truck, and McWinnie employees are putting up an Overcash sign. Does that mean that Don Overcash is corrupt? No. Does it give an appearance that he might be? Yes. I was a police officer for twenty years. I operated under rules, where you couldn't even take a free cup of coffee, or you could risk being fired. I'm an attorney. I'm bound by a code of ethics. And if I don't follow it, there's an agency in Denver ready to take my law license at any moment, the Attorney Office of Attorney Regulation. Why is it so difficult for elected officials in a town like Loveland to have at least a minimal set of written standards that we all understand and agree to abide by them? It's not just being, it's not just being on the take, it's the appearance that you might be. And that oftentimes is what we really need to avoid more than anything.
Okay, one more question, and then we have to have quick answers. Go ahead.
Quick answers, slightly quicker, thirty seconds, might need.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to add, because I think every one of us who's sat in these council meetings on the line, seeing how often they break the open government law. I mean, they're doing all manner of things, and executives that, they're just breaking the law. And you bring it up, and they're just like, "Oh, who?" And they just keep going. So, I'm assuming that you can confirm that if you're elected, then you would invite Jeff Roberts, the director of the Colorado Freedom of Information Coalition, to come and give you a seminar of what the laws of Colorado are on open government, meaning records, all that.
Yes. Do you all have a quick comment about that?
No, I think that's a great idea.
I know, it's hard to hear enough of me. I'll tell you this. So right now, there's a big campaign that Troy Prenting and Jackie Marsh have cost the city so much money in legal fees, right? Wrong. We defended. Jackie Marsh was the defendant. The city sued her to keep her from getting open records, and we won. And so, you see, we have a culture down here that does everything they can to thumb their nose at the open meetings law, and at the Colorado Open Records Act. And they get away with it, because it's so difficult to take them.
It's constant.
It's constant. We have too many executive sessions. The open, it ought to be assumed that every record is an open record, and that every meeting is done in the light of day and in public. That ought to be the assumption. We currently operate counter to all of those assumptions.
They also require people to do an open records request for just basic information that our city should tell us easily, or that one would have.
Okay. Jessica, you said one more quick. Okay, quick, quick. Go ahead, Natalie.
First of all, I think Loveland, Loveland Voice are doing this. You know, and that's quite a removal for you guys, and I wanna make this observation. I think the strength of you as a black candidate is astounding.
Yes.
So, I think your message, Jackie's message coming in is to each one of us, you know, whatever, but together, you create a formidable presence. But the question is, I think that Steve Adams will have that same reaction, if you guys get it. And one of your first jobs might be, how are they replacing you?
Ah!
And Moses.
Okay, who wants, we got time for one answer. Who wants to answer that? Why? Because he will speak for all of you.
Nancy, I'm thinking about it.
Natalie.
Natalie, Natalie. Sorry. Natalie, I'm thinking about it. There would be, I think there needs to be change. But it's difficult, because if you remove one of these people, who do you backfill it with? And it could go from jumping from the frying pan into the fire. It would be an informed decision, and I think it would be, take a look at everybody and anybody that might be eligible for a momentary placeholder, until a national, real national search can be conducted, and you find the best and brightest person to fill that position that Loveland could afford and that Loveland could do.
Okay. We're gonna wrap it up with each candidate just like thirty seconds to close it out, if y'all want to.
I just, to wrap it all up, the one thing that I can promise you, if I'm elected, is that I'll vote with my heart and my conscience. And I will vote based on listening to my constituents, because that's part of a fair representative government. I've lived here almost my whole life. I plan to live here the rest of my life.
I've lived here almost my whole life, I plan to live here the rest of my life, and my sole desire in running for council is just to give back. It's something I did as teaching, it's something I'm used to doing for my whole life, and that's what I wanna do in this role.
I feel the same way. I got into this because of the Karen Gardner incident, and my time on the Trust Commission. You know, I think a lot of people did a lot of good work on that, and our work was not done. And so, when I had some community members, and yes, our mayor, who I had been watching, and I had looked up to, and I thought, "That's a respectable, honest, transparent person." And so when I had others that I valued, their opinion, and including her, ask me, "Would you be willing to do this?", I said, "No." And then, "No" again, and again, and again, and finally said, "Yes." But it's because Loveland deserves better than what they have right now, the future is at stake. This election can change Loveland for the next ten years and beyond. And I'll tell you what, I also know if these folks up here don't get elected, including myself, we're still gonna go out and serve this community. So, that's not gonna change. And I love Loveland, I wanna stay here too. This is where I've raised my family, it's got my heart, and I want to give back, because just like Troy, it's given a lot to my family. So, thank you. Hope for your vote. Get out there and vote.
Thirty seconds. Again, this is for a service, this isn't for a profession, I'm not for my career. I wanna do this because I love Loveland, and I feel that my qualities, and my character, and my enthusiasm, is something that Loveland has been lacking. I know specifically, within four or two, they're hurting. Troy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for every single one of you that have felt hurt by your representative, and I know that I have a lot more to overcome, to regain, and help you guys heal, because it hasn't been fair. And you all need to be listened to.
Jackie Marsh started this session by saying that she invited these three to jump into the campaign she failed to mention. She asked me if I was running, and I said, "Hell no. Been there, done that, I'm not doing it." I wanna see some new faces and new voices, and then when that didn't materialize, I'm in it, because it's time for change. My sign, all my literature says, "Troy Fanning for the people," I mean it. I will be the voice of the people. I will represent every single one of you, all of your families, everybody that lives here. I will not be the status quo voice of the developer, big business. I won't be their voice. Will I listen to them? Of course. But we need people on there that will serve you, and I promise, I will serve you.
Okay, one last thing, we have to shout out the Loveland Voice, for giving us all a voice. So if these are helpful for you, these events are helpful for you, the information you get online, if it's helpful for you, donate. Donate to the Loveland Voice. We have signs in the back, please take a sign, if you'd like one for your yard, or you know somebody that would like one. And you can always reach out to us for additional questions. Okay, well that's it. Thanks everybody. I'm sure that if you wanna ask any individual questions, everyone here would be happy to talk to you. They would like donations as well, except for Troy, right? Seriously.
I'm not taking any donations, and it's not because I'm wealthy or rich, it's because I don't want, let's see what these financial reports show tomorrow.
Yeah.
And how many have been contributed, how many?
Not tomorrow, they're just existing.
Let's see how many McWhinney checks are in the accounts today. I'm not taking donations because I'm richer, richer, wealthy, but I'm really running a true campaign. I'm beholden to nobody. And I don't want anybody to think for a moment, that, "Oh, Troy took a twenty-five-dollar check from the McWhinneys, therefore he's a..." I'm not, I don't want it. It's a low-budget campaign, so donate to these people.
Yes, donate to them, donate to Jackie. Make sure you register to vote. Vote, vote, vote. And ballots drop next week, so make sure that you vote, and vote early, get them turned in, help your neighbors remember, there's still time to register. Okay, thank you all. Thank you. Good job candidates.